Our chairman is not here, I'm the vice chairman. If everybody is okay with that, we're gonna move forward with our agenda. Uh, the first order of business is the adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
Chairman would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Is there a second?
No, second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is some unfinished business from a prior meeting. This is final plan for a modification to an approved subdivision and the creation of a minor subdivision and of a major use site development titled Our Way Development, whole industrial park amendment for Danny J. and Teresa M. Quinlan. The proposal is to A. split a 2.56 acre parcel off the Buck Sport Road, tax map lot 26-2 into two lots, both including one residential structure, and add two apartment units to the existing due place. And B. split a 3.72 acre parcel accessed off Our Way, tax map lot 26-4 into two lots, both including a residential structure in the urban zone. Uh, the discussion tonight is for, uh, the final plan, finding of facts and conclusion. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Steven Salisbury.
Welcome.
Uh, tonight, looking at the November 9 plan that I submitted, we've gone back to the record easement to Meeks property, eliminating the proposed easement we've been working on for a few months. That's off the table, we're not able to sign for various reasons. Um, indicate where that right-of-way is on plan, between the house and the garage on that front porch.
Okay.
So that's where it is by record today, that's what I'm trying to change that.
Alright. Is there anything else that you wanted to add for?
Nope, the application changed to the previous one.
We had a question about the way the agenda item was written for item B. It says, "Split a 3.72 acre parcel", and we were having trouble figuring out where the 3.72 came from. We have, on the, on the map, it says lot 1-4, 3.24 acres. Tax map 26 lot 2. And then there's lot 1-3, which is .74 acres. Tax map 26 lot 2. That's the parcel that's being split, right?
Yes.
So that would be...
The whole parcel's 6.54 acres.
Yeah, 6.54 acres. Oh, including the front part.
All, all four lots.
Okay, so where did the 3.72 number come from? That was some confusion.
Yeah, 'cause those two lots that it looks like it comes from add up to 3.98.
I don't know, I figured not on my applications.
Well, I'm just taking it off the plan, 3.24 and .74. I'm just wa- I mean, just to clarify that the, that we understand where that lot is coming from and the size of each lot. The 2.56 front lots add up perfectly. I was, maybe it's just a typing mistake, or...
Well, I'm the one that does the, uh, the injur- item itself.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did, I remember that when we first did it, um, there was a lot of confusion because the way the assessing records are kept, not necessarily the way deeds and other land records are kept.
Mm-hmm.
So I probably, I believe that there were two lots that, that parcel included two lots in the assessing system, and I probably took that amount off the assessing system.
Yes. Do we need to change any of that?
Well, you put the records, you can say, yeah, you can say that you see a discrepancy and I'll enter in the minutes.
Okay.
So it's gonna be 3.98?
Yeah, for our, for our...
Right, okay, okay.
Are there, um, other questions for the applicant?
Steve, just to, just to confirm, um, the right-of-way was removed in, from the discussion, more or less, the new right-of-way.
The new right-of-way is off the table.
Mrs. Meeks does have an existing right-of-way deed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that? Is there a description exactly stating where it is?
No.
Okay. So what she's using now, her, the drive-in, the right-of-way across lot 1-1, and then taking basically a left into her driveway leading to her house, is what she's been using for a long time? Do you know how long?
A few years at least.
Okay.
Are there, uh, other questions that the board has for the applicant? I, I took the time to, to write some things down that I'd like to share for this situation. There are some findings of fact that I think are appropriate for this situation, and then there's some opinions that I've written down. I'd like to read these to the board. These are my opinions. You guys don't necessarily have to adopt them, and you can certainly argue against them. I kinda wanna put this out on the table to maybe frame the discussion and clarify things, if that's alright with you guys. Let me just start with what I wrote. Under findings of fact, the board has reviewed all aspects of this final plan for the modification to this subdivision, the creation of the minor subdivision, and the major use site development. Um, in essence, we have found that it meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and the land use ordinance. Fact number one. So fact number two, per the subdivision, Article 7.3A5, it requires that the board has a copy of all deed restrictions, easements, right-of-way, other encumbrances, and that currently affect the property. I believe that we have that now. The, the other finding of fact number three is the adjacent property owner Meeks already has a right-of-way and a utility easement as described in the deeds, and a copy of such appears on the final plan. Uh, the next finding of fact is that the applicant has withdrawn, removed from the application any reference or statement to the extinguishing of any easements that Mrs. Meeks currently has. So that's been removed. Um, another point here is that the applicant has withdrawn its effort to propose a new easement with Mrs. Meeks, and leaves the current easement benefiting Mrs. Meeks in place for the purposes of, of this application. Um, and the final finding I have is that the condition that the board imposed on the approval of this application under submission materials of preliminary plan 606.8T, which says that we have to have a, you know, signed easement, uh, that, that becomes null and void because there is no longer a proposed easement. So, so those would be my findings of fact, and then my conclusion from this. And I have some other things I wanna say after the conclusion as well, but based on these findings, that the board would approve this project as, as represented here on, on these plans. So that would be my framework for that. And then I just wanted to add a couple things on top of that for discussion. Um, the, the first one is, is the intent of the part of the ordinance, the 606.8T, about having easements, is, is to make sure that any required easements are executed upon final approval. And I believe in the ordinance, the assumption is that an easement is necessary to maintain the rights of, of the involved property, and, and that no easement currently exists. So that ordinance, like, assumes that no easement exists. So that, that seems to be, you know, something that we need to take into consideration. Um, another opinion that I have here is that imposing a condition of approval on the change of an existing easement gives leverage to parties not present here and not accountable to this process. It, it gives them an unfair advantage when they have a high stake in, in the outcome of what's gonna go on with this property. So, another point that I have is that it is still in the best interests of the property owner and Mrs. Meeks to come to some sort of an agreement about a more refined and descriptive easement. I, I just feel that this is my opinion. Um, but that discussion, negotiation, execution does not need to take place within the scope of this application. Um, the second to last point is that per the testimony given to the board and the letters, the emails, all the memos that have been provided to us, about renegotiating the easement may, may turn into more of a civil matter. And that's really outside the purview of this board, in my opinion. Um, and then the last point I, I wanna say is that having Mrs. Meeks, and this goes to a standard that was, that was made in some of the documentation, having Mrs. Meeks left whole by this process, and there's a legal definition that goes with that, that may well be beyond the authority of this board. But, our approval here, as we're sort of suggesting, does not diminish any benefit that Mrs. Meeks has concerning the current easement. So I don't believe that if we approve this, her, her existing benefit gets diminished in any way. I know that she gets left whole by that, but I, I'm not sure that we can cover that. So, so those are the points that I wanted to make. Does anybody have an argument or a problem with that, or? Anything I'd like to add? I'd like those to be part of the record.
I'm, I'm just looking at the fence they put in the fence now. It's not, it's not on her property, and I guess she still wanna put it in. But it's part of the easement. So I guess that little section, is that covered by? I mean, it changed. They would've changed things for it. I assume, I mean, if that's what the fence is, she's using that little piece of land right there. So by us accepting it, does that mean?
Accepting?
Right, that, the fence, which is on the subdivision property, not on her property. I believe that she's the one who put it in. So if we accept it the way it is, does that mean she loses that little piece? Of easement? Between?
I don't think there's any loss of benefit here. With the language that's in the current plan, that, that's just my opinion. That, you know, the way that it's spelled out here, because it's not done in detail, she retains all of the, the rights that she currently has.
So if we could get that right, to where that fence is.
I don't think the easement specifically addresses that fence, the way it's written right now.
Okay, yeah, I know it does.
You, you could argue either way.
No, I mean, that, you're right about the civil. Some of this is, is out of our hands.
Yeah, and that's where I wanna be careful here, because we wanna move forward. If we impose a condition that somebody else can argue with, and they're not in this room, and they're gonna drop an anchor and stop this whole process, how is that, how is that fair to the applicant and, and Mrs. Meeks, and, um, you know, how do we move forward without, you know, getting ourselves involved in something that's kinda outside of our scope?
Right, right, I agree with that.
And, and the way the applicant has restructured things, he, he's kind of taken that off the table, I, I feel like. So we have to sort of, react to what's in front. So having said that, is there any other comment from the city? That they would like to make about this item before I turn this over to a public hearing?
I, I have no other comments. I mean, the minutes. I mean, from what my thoughts are, are, it, it goes along with what you said, and those were captured, I believe, in the minutes on the previous meeting. You've, and you've stated it very clearly. I do wanna say, and you also, it's gonna sound silly, but everybody loves Mrs. Meeks. I mean, seriously, it's, and it's, but the problem is that is not about feelings and, and, and subjectiveness, but it's about what's in the ordinance, and, and I think that when the applicant left, took that, that, that extinguishment of Mrs. Meeks easement, then that, you can't tie that to the process anymore, as simple as that.
Okay, I would like to say that there was a memo from, um, this, the city asked the attorney for an opinion.
Correct, and the applicant is also in receipt of that, correct, Steve?
So, so this memo also informs us to some degree of the situation, and it's really informed the remarks that I just made.
Well, so maybe we wanna expand on this a bit, if it's okay. Um, I was made aware by Steve that Steve was planning to bring legal counsel, counsel with him along tonight. So to make sure that we don't waste time, I contacted our lawyer, because there's no point of the applicant coming with a lawyer and just, and it doesn't go anywhere because usually the planning board will not know what to do. So when I was made aware of that, I contacted the city's lawyer to get an opinion on what was going on, and that is part of your package, and that's consistent with what you said tonight.
Okay, does any member of the board wish to make any further comment? The applicant? I'm about to open the public hearing.
I think you articulated a lot down, just the point of, with the change in the easement, if we're faced now with this application for a subdivision, there's really no reason why this should be held up. You know, the, the outside party, Meeks, already has a right-of-way, so that, it's a matter that they, it should resolve in the future, but I, I think you captured a lot.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
So, I, I get, so this would, uh, the way it's written, it's, would qualify the 606.8T. Because, which was the big thing we were concerned about last time.
Yeah. Yeah, so they have that intent, is to, if there's something that's being processed or put in place, then it applies, but since there's no change being proposed here, that, that section doesn't really have any teeth, and, and we specifically delayed the proceedings because we wanted that to complete, well, I feel like it's null and void.
So what that means is, the applicant, there would be no signing of that easement between the developer and the applicant? Cause there is no...
At this time and as part of this scope. Now, just because of the testimony that I've heard and the information that's been flowing around, I believe at some point, that the applicant and Mrs. Meeks are gonna talk about that easement. But, it's not here in front of us. And because that may, that discussion may balloon something way beyond our scope.
No, I mean, it follows the ordinance, that's all we care about.
Right, so that's where I wanna, that's kinda why I wanna draw these boundaries around this, so that that part can, can move forward. Okay, so this is a public meeting. I invite any member of the public who has something to say about this, to come up to the podium and please state your name for the record.
Here I am again. Are you saying that the original plan that came before you is now the plan that you are going to approve?
No.
Then what are the changes to the original plan?
What, what we have for a plan is this plan dated November 9. Did you get a copy of this?
I don't, um, I don't know if I have that one.
So thi- this is the most current version that we had, dated November 9?
No, I have a whole lot.
And that's what we're con- that's what we're discussing, approving.
What are the changes in this? Essentially, from the original request, this subdivision, what has changed?
What we feel are the, are the two primary changes as part of this discussion, are that, first of all, the language about your existing easement being extinguished is gone.
That's, that was gone last time, I think, wasn't it?
Yes, correct. And the idea that, um, any renegotiation of that easement is sort of in progress is inferred by the note that's been added that verbatim copies what's in the deed. "Easement to Meeks property described at", also conveying here with, I mean, I think you know this language, it's the second note from the bottom, that's sort of in the center of the page. That's just a copy paste from the deed. So that securely establishes the fact that that easement as described in that deed is what's being recognized on this plan.
Yes, that was the original, from my recall, that is the original description of this easement.
Right, but it wasn't included on the plan, so it wasn't really part of the record. Now it's...
Now it is, okay.
It, it's on this plan for this record. I mean, it was always part of that deed, but it's been brought to the front here and put on the plan.
I've read that deeds, and I've read that deed, and that deed is not specific of where on Our Way this easement is.
True.
So I could go any place, it seems to me, from Our Way to my house. Is that correct or no?
Now, that's not a question that we can answer. As, as a board member...
Well, if you're describing the easement as it was, which is in front of Mr. Quillen's house...
Our, let me just put a boundary about what you're saying. I understand where you're going with it. As a planning board, our purpose is to make sure that that easement exists.
That that easement is part of you?
That easement exists.
Yes.
As to the quality, like, where it is, if it gives you access to your property, that's what we're interested in having. The, the details of how it's executed, what the quality is, what the dimensions are, if it's poorly described, we can't go down that road because we're not the, the body that determines that kind of thing. So I understand what you're saying is that, that that, that easement might actually allow you to go anywhere on the property, and that makes me think that the applicant is gonna wanna work with you later, outside the boundaries of this, to solidify that. And I think they indicated that to you during this process, where they started to do that.
Right, right.
And they ran into some roadblocks. That whole part of the negotiations and, and how it hijacks this process that we're trying to do, I think they've decided to try and bring that to you outside of this process and not make it all.
Right.
Cause there's a lot of other stuff that needs to be taken care of here. And it's sort of unfair that part of that process that you might be negotiating with the applicant about includes another person who has no skin in this game. He's not here at this meeting, he's not there to discuss. He's outside the scope, but somehow he's jamming up our whole process. So, you know, how is that fair to anybody?
Well, I want to convey to you that Mr. Quillen and I are not adversaries here. We've agreed on, you know, what is, is going to happen. What I don't quite understand is why it hasn't happened. Because I have a lawyer, he has a lawyer, he has a surveyor, and it's gone around and around, and it's like, it's like Dickens' circumlocution, uh, office, you know? It's gone around and around and comes sort of back to the same place.
We don't have any leverage to make that happen for you.
Well, it seemed like it almost happened. I mean, there was a, you know, a plan that had the dimensions, thens, 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 thens.
That's, that's something to build on. And you can work with the applicant outside of this process to complete that.
I just don't know why it hasn't happened, and I, I, I don't think it's anything to do with you.
Well, see, what we're trying to do here, and I don't wanna use the word "justice", because we're, this isn't really about, um, you know, we're not, we're not a court of law, but the, the fact that the whole process gets hijacked by this detail in sort of a outside the scope, for an outside the scope reason for this board, we feel like it's not fair that the entire process sits and waits while one person decides whether he's gonna agree to an easement that may or may not get executed. We feel like all this, all the right pieces are in place here for this subdivision and, and all the other parts. The only requirement in the ordinance is that we have a copy of the easement, and we have that.
That's it from the deed, from the original deed. Because I spoke to Mr. McQuillen, he's fine with giving me, and so is his ex-wife, and so is Mr. Quillen, and so I guess I feel like, come on, what?
So, so that matter, we believe, and that's part of what I see...
I think you believe too, that I should...
It's a, it, it becomes a civil matter. It's not in our scope to, to resolve that.
I get that, I understand that.
So that's sort of the direction we're, we're taking tonight.
It just seems like, does it seem to you that we, we started out and it's sort of almost right back in the same place again?
Uh, no, I think we're actually a lot further along because a lot of information is taking place. You've seen sort of a proposed easement change, there's some mechanisms that need to happen. We've identified sticking points, we've separated out things that can be pursued separately.
Okay, so the only thing that's different about this plan, other than, you know, those acreage things, is that originally, this statement that is on here now was not on here. That describes the deed part of it.
And the extinguishment?
Yes, and then another part has been removed.
Yeah, the extinguishment came in after the first plan, I think, didn't it?
It came in the prelim.
I don't know that it was on the first...
So, so to us, those are the two important changes. The extinguishment is removed. So what that does is, is that, in the words of Mr. Baer, um, "The current easement benefiting this, it leaves the current easement benefiting Mrs. Meeks in place."
In place, okay. So we are back to the original reading.
This is the memo, you can have that, and thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Let's just hope that, um, the, um, the feelings that I have with Mr. Quillen and with, um, at least one lien holder, I don't know about the Totten, but I've been told the Totten is okay with changing the easement, uh, it's just costing us a lot of money, you know? That, I don't know that we should've had to pay, but at any rate, yes.
Yeah, the financial part, when you use the word "make whole", that, that's where I get concerned, that, you know, pulling in like a financial, a, a remuneration part, that the board doesn't have any jurisdiction, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously you have to have representation. You can't present me with, uh, you know, dimensions and so on, that, that I don't understand, so I have to go get somebody that understands it.
True.
And, um, but, at any rate, I appreciate your patience. Uh, I'm sorry that it was such a delay for Mr. Quillen, cause he wants to do this and sell his property. Um, but I hope we can work this out within a reasonable amount of time at reasonable or no expense, as far as I'm concerned. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to, um, make any statements on this matter? Hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing. What would the board like to do with the application? Is there a motion regarding perhaps the findings of fact and conclusions that I put forward earlier?
Would you be desperate making that motion? You know all those numbers and facts, would it be easier?
Uh, I could, I could craft a motion, if that's the board's pleasure. Referring to what's already in the record, Referring to what's already on the record, I, the motion would be that, based on the findings of fact that we put forth here, and the conclusion that we came to, is, is that the board, the board approves this project as, as represented on this November 9th plan. Based on not only these findings of facts, but the prior review and the fact that it meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance handling. So that, that's the motion. Is there any, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Is there any discussion?
I mean, I think there were good intentions all around, and the good intentions basically hit a brick wall and made this a lot more confusing, a lot more drawn out than what it had to be. But I guess we're back to where it could've been a couple months ago, but, you know, for nobody's fault, really.
Yeah, I think we did make an effort to play to everybody's lead and, and try and work with the applicant and the, the butter to try and understand their, uh, concerns and, and do what we can to work within the framework of our responsibilities. Alright, so all those in favor of the motion? Thank you. A lot of it approved. Are there any MyLars?
No MyLars, good time.
Okay. Name the three or four.
Do you have the MyLars tonight? Which one of those?
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
This is the project of the night?
Yeah.
Okay, there are MyLars.
Okay, so, perhaps a motion about adjournment post MyLars signing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn after we sign MyLars.
I'll say that? All in favor?
Hey!
Okay.